So if you, if you look at this, your series question, definitely your sixth FRQ without question will be a series problem. That's just typical. What I noticed when I was looking up different FRQs to figure out which one to bring today, for me to find a Lagrange error bound, I had to go back to 2011. They haven't had one since then. So it could be either we're gonna have one this year because we're due for it, or they just don't really do those anymore, I'm not sure. But most of them were alternating series error bounds, so I do have the one from 2016 for that. Parametric and vector valued versus polar, I notice if you see that all of these are BC2 questions, that means that these are typically calculator active, and you're not gonna have both, you're probably gonna have one or the other. Okay, so that's just interesting to know. If you go back and you pull up like the PDFs of all of the FRQs for like the past 10 years, you'll notice patterns of like, oh, this is typically what number one is, this is typically what number two is, this is typically what number three is. You can start to predict what the FRQs will be, so that you can make yourself more prepared. So I'd say the, the links that I gave you guys, those are, it's good to go to those pages, not to do every single FRQ, but to start to notice the similarities, because it can give you a good idea of like what to prepare for. Alright, so we can do a polar one, so that's page six or eight. So we've got this one right here, six, and then we've got page eight. Both of these are gonna be calculator active. Do you guys have a preference on which one we do?
We do.
Yeah. So page eight. Okay. And everybody has a calculator? All good? You can come up and grab one, I've got a few extras. Yeah, perfect. There's one more up here if you need it. Alright, so it says R is this shaded region right here that's inside the circle. That's R equals 3, so this one is the circle. And then R equals 3 minus 2 sine of 2 theta, and that's this like funky peanut shape over here. So they want you to find the area of R first. So to find the area of a polar region, what do we have to do?
Integrate.
We have to integrate, right? And we have to figure out the bounds of our integral. You have two different shapes going on, so you're gonna have two different sets of bounds for your integral, so you can get the different parts to the shape, right? What else has to be a part of your formula to make sure you do it correctly? You have to have a pi. Do you have to have a pi? You don't have to have a pi. You have to have a one-half in the front, and then you have to have R squared. Pi is gonna be part of your bounds, though. So, so one-half goes in the front, and then the equation that you have, you're gonna have that be squared. So it's one-half R squared d theta is the formula we use for the integral of that, okay? So if you can see in this picture, we're gonna have to break it up, so we know for which part of the integral we're gonna use for this curve, and which part of the integral we're gonna use for that curve, alright? And we're only, we're considering the interval from 0 to pi, which is why they only gave us the picture in the first and second quadrant, okay? So those are my hints, make sure you have your formula correct. You're gonna have two integrals with different bounds to find your area, okay? You should not be doing this by hand, you should be using your calculator. To get your points, you need to write down the integral that you are going to plug into your calculator, okay? Don't just plug it in and write the answer, you need to write down the integral and then say what you get as a result, okay? For part B, it says define the value of dx d theta at theta equals pi/6. They didn't tell you what x was. Do you guys remember how to find x? It is R cos theta. So you're gonna use this R, and you're gonna be multiplying it by cos theta. And then what do you need to do to find dx d theta? Derivative. Now, you should not do that derivative by hand, because this is a calculator-active question. So that derivative can be done in your calculator and evaluated in your calculator. How do we evaluate derivatives in our calculator? Math 8. So if you hit Math 8 in your calculator, it will let you type in the function you wanna look at, it will let you type in the x value you want to evaluate it at. We should not be doing that by hand, not for a calculator-active question, okay? Again, we're gonna write down what we're typing in our calculator. So I'm gonna write down that I found x and what it is, and then I'm gonna write down dx d theta, and I'm gonna write down that I'm evaluating it at pi/6, but I'm gonna let the calculator do the work for me, okay? The distance between the two curves, how do you typically find the distance between two curves? Top minus bottom, you subtract them, right? So if you wanna know the distance between two things, just subtract them, okay? Now, the tricky thing about this question is that the circle's outside, the peanut is inside. And then on this one, they kinda switch. So you have to pay attention to what interval you have, so you know which one to minus from which one, okay? So they did give you the interval from 0 to pi halves, which means you are considering this part of the picture, okay? So think about it, which one would you subtract from which one if you wanna find the distance between the two? The circle minus the peanut. Do you like that? That's the official term. Snacks! We've been wondering. Yeah, go get your snacks, guys, we'll... Okay, so for part C, we're gonna be subtracting the two equations, right, to find the distance between those. And then we wanna see how that distance is changing. So if we're finding how the distance is changing, then what should we do? Derivatives, okay? So you're gonna have one curve minus another curve, which is gonna switch into the derivative of one curve minus the derivative of the other curve. So we wanna see when the distance is changing with respect to theta when theta is pi thirds. Again, you should not be doing this by hand. You should be doing this on a calculator, because why make the risk of making a mistake by hand, okay? So that part is good. For part D, this might be something that your teacher did a really good job of pointing out, but just in case, we're gonna write down one little thing here. Sorry, I'm trying to zoom. Okay, so one thing I want you to write, because this one has a d theta dt and a dr dt. We also have the dx d theta. When you do polar, there's all sorts of d whatevers, and it can be kinda hard to keep them all straight. So what I want you to write is that dr d theta equals dr dt divided by d theta dt. And that might seem obvious to you, but it's important to have that in your brain to be able to do this question. So dr d theta is dr dt divided by d theta dt. If you take this and you find R prime, R prime is the same thing as dr d theta, okay? So when you just take the derivative of that, you're not finding the x's, you're not finding the y's. We're not doing that part. If we just take this and find R prime, just find the normal derivative of this, that is actually dr d theta, okay? So between having your R prime and this formula, you should be able to do this problem, okay? So we're gonna be isolating the dr dt, which is gonna give us an expression. And then we're gonna take that expression and we're gonna evaluate it at pi over 6, okay? This is not a problem you should be using the derivative on your calculator for to evaluate, because we have to, we're kinda manipulating this, alright? So figure out your derivative and stuff, manipulate it, and then you can go ahead and directly evaluate it, alright? But again, use your calculator, okay? Any questions about setup for any of these things? Do you kinda have an idea of where you need to go with these? Okay. So what we're gonna do first is we're gonna go through now, so that you have a really good understanding of the question. You're gonna answer as many parts of it as you can. And then the plan is to look at the rubric and look at another student's sample response after that, so we can see how harshly these types of things are graded, where the points typically be, get taken off. And then you can go ahead and look at it for yourself and see what grade you would've gotten on yours, okay? So while you're working on this, your rubric packet should be closed. Your sample response packet should be closed, so you're doing this completely with your own brain, okay? Go ahead and work on that. So for part A, you didn't have to do it all in integrals. I did it all as integrals, but we all know how to find the area of a circle, and you're just finding the area of a quarter of a circle if you're looking at this part right here. So if you used the area formula of a circle to do this part, that's fine. So this part right here could've been 1/4 times pi R squared. If you wanted to do it that way, that would be fine. I wrote it this way, I just said one-half of pi halves to pi, and then I did 3 squared d theta, so I just used it like I was doing a polar equation area. And then for this area right here, I did one-half of 0 to pi halves of just the peanut shape. Okay, so that's how I set up my area. But this part right here, you could've done 9 pi fourths, okay? But you should've had 9.708. So make sure whenever you are answering your questions that you are rounding to three decimal places or more. Do not do less, they will not give you a point, okay? Always three. It does not have to be like rounding up. You could do what they call truncated rounding, where you just take right the first three decimals and cut it off and don't care what the rest of them say. So here, 9.708 or 9.707 would be equally accurate, okay? Alright, for the next one, I went ahead and I wrote down what x was. So this is my R times cos theta. And then in my calculator, I did Math 8, and I just typed this in. And then I typed in pi/6, and I got negative 2.366. Any questions on that part? The distance was the, for this first one, because it's in the first quadrant, I did the outer curve or the circle minus the peanut-shaped one. So I did outside minus the inside one. And I don't, I don't know necessarily if you'd wanna write it this way or not. I just wrote d d theta of the distance, because I was taking the derivative of this. Again, I just typed this in my calculator, I used Math 8. I typed this in my calculator in pi thirds, and I got negative 2. It's technically negative 1.99999, but it's negative 2. Alright, and then for the last one, I found that my dr d theta was 0 minus 2 cos of 2 theta, and then I did the chain rule, and that's where I got my 2 on the end. So I was using this formula, and I said negative 4 cos 2 theta equals dr dt over 3. And then I just multiplied the 3 over to the other side to get the dr dt by itself. And then I took dr dt and I evaluated that for pi/6, and I got negative 6. Yes, yes. So with this one, if you kept in your head, kept it, I guess, if you isolated it this way and you said like dr d theta times d theta dt, and then knew that you were doing 3 times the derivative, then you could've used your calculator for that as well, yeah. Alright, so go ahead and have your rubric on your desk, and then also get out your sample responses. And it looks like my little table of contents page numbers are wrong, so I'm sorry about that. Page 10 is where the sample responses for person B start. So I don't know if you guys have ever looked at the sample responses on the College Board website, but they always give you 3. The first one, student A, is always a perfect example, a 9 out of 9 score. Person B is always a 6 out of 9 score, and person C is always a 3 out of 9 score. So what we're gonna do first is we're just gonna look at person B, and we're gonna look at the rubric, and we're gonna try to score them. We know that overall they got 6 points, but we don't know where those points were. And so if you score them, and then after this, don't look yet, but after this, there's this part where they specify exactly what points they got and why. And I've found that if you're looking for how you can write down your answers in such a way that you get better grades on these, then those explanations are the best way to do that studying, okay? So go ahead and look at person B's response, compare it with the rubric, and see how many points you would've given them for that. One of the things to know about how the FRQs are graded is that typically, when they have things like this, where you have 3 points that are kind of written in a row, if you don't get the first point, you are ineligible to get the other points. So if your integrand is wrong, you automatically can't get the answer point right. That means if you wrote it wrong, you still can't get the answer, even if you technically got it right, because you plugged it in right on your calculator and you just miswrote it, okay? So be careful of that when you're writing this stuff down. You don't wanna make yourself ineligible for a point, because you had, you know, the equivalent of a typo on your page or whatever, okay? So go ahead and look at student B, grade those. Okay, so if we look at why they got the grade that they did, sometimes as you look, you'll, you'll learn something interesting about how they grade things. So, so I'd say it's good to look at a bunch of these FRQs and look at the sample responses and why they got the grade they did. But it says the first student B, they got 6 points total, so 2 points for part A, 2 points for part B, no points for part C, and 2 for part D. So in part A, they wrote the correct integrand. The limits of 0 and pi halves were correct. So they got the integrand and limits points, but they used an incorrect constant on the integral. And they didn't earn the answer point. So if you look at the way that it's graded, 1 point for integrand, 1 point for limits, they were earning the points for this part. They did not get the point for the answer, because their answer was wrong, okay? So it's possible, the way they do partial credit is typically, you get like a point for how you set something up, and then you have all your work, and then you get a point at the end. That's typically how they do the points, is like the beginning and the end. So you always wanna make sure, even if you don't know how to completely do the problem, if you can set up anything in the problem, you wanna try to do that, because sometimes that will get you a point, okay? For part B, their work was correct. Part C, they didn't have a valid approach, so they didn't get anything. Part D was correct. So sometimes when you look at the responses, if they did the work perfectly, it doesn't tell you a whole lot about the grading. I find that sometimes it's nice to find one where they, where they got partial credit, so you can see where that partial credit was given. I don't know if student C was any more interesting. So if you look at student C in part B, they ended up, they would've gotten the point for saying what x equals, but not get the point for doing the derivative of x and evaluating it, because that answer was wrong. So they got the setup point, which doesn't take a lot of work, but the point for the rest of the work, they didn't get. And they could've just done that on the calculator, yeah. So that's what I'm saying, is don't, don't do the work that's gonna get like something kinda messy, because this would've been, you would've had to distribute the cos, and then you would've had a product rule, and you would've had to remember your unit circle to plug stuff in. So there was a lot of places you could've gone wrong, as opposed to just plug it in the calculator and get the decimal answer. And that's, that's better in that situation, okay? Alright, any questions on that one? Alright. So we said next, we wanted to do a parametric or one of the vector-valued ones. So if you look at your blank FRQ packet, that would be one of the first 2 problems. So these, I think they're both kind of a mixture of parametric and vector-valued, actually. So we can do the first one or the second one, so page 2 or 4. What do you guys think? 2, 4, okay. Alright, so if we look at this one, now these ones are gonna remind you a lot of the, I don't know if they always happen to be the particle motion problems, but they were on this one, so they're just particle motion with giving you parametric equations as part of it. So first, we're gonna find the x coordinate of the position of the particle at the time t equals 2. So if you wanna find the x coordinate of the position, what are you gonna have to do with what they gave you? You're gonna have to integrate the velocity, okay? So we're definitely integrating the velocity. The tricky part about this problem is you have to figure out what your interval is, right? So what the bounds of your integral are gonna be. And then you also have to figure out how to incorporate that initial value that they gave you, alright? So make sure you have that for part A. Definitely using that initial value, and then figuring out what your integral should be. Alright, next, for the interval from 0 to 1, there's a point on the curve at which the line tangent to the curve has a slope of 2. At what time is the object at that point? Alright, so when it says the tangent, the line is tangent to the curve, what does that make you think of? Slope derivative, right? So that means we have to figure out what dy dx is, and how do we do dy dx if we have a parametric problem? So the position is x of t, y of t. dy dt over dx dt. So that means that if the position is x and y, then this velocity is x prime and y prime. And so they already gave you the derivatives, you just have to evaluate them, okay? So this is one where we, we could still use the calculator, right? We're gonna use our calculator, because this is FRQ 2. So we wanna use our calculators as much as we can. Now, it says that the line tangent to the curve has a slope of 2. So are you solving for the derivative, or are you doing something else? Are you like evaluating the derivative, or what do you have to do with that? You set it equal to 2, okay? So what's a way that your calculator could be beneficial in that? Graph it. So take your derivative, graph it as y1. Take your 2, graph that as y2, and then see where they cross, okay? Find the time at which the speed of the particle is 3. So we have to remember the formula for speed. Square root. Yep. Yep, so the derivative of x squared plus the derivative of y squared. So we have that. Now, it says the time at which the speed of the particle is 3. So are you plugging 3 in, or are you setting it equal to 3? Setting it equal to 3. So that's another problem, where we're gonna graph that formula as y1. We're gonna graph 3 as y2. We're gonna see where they cross, right? Find the total distance traveled by the particle. Integrate the speed, right? So we're taking that same formula, square root of x prime squared plus y prime squared, and we're integrating it this time. Find that total distance. Okay, go ahead and work on that one. Alright, so for part A, you needed to use the, the x coordinate of that initial point they gave you. And then they told you that that initial point was at t equals 1, so then you should be evaluating the integral from 1 to 2. And you're just finding the x coordinate, so that's all you had to do. So the x coordinate was 2.557. For part B, dy dx, you just had to do y prime divided by x prime, set it equal to 2. And if you find that intersection on your calculator, it should be at .840 or .84. I think they're okay with writing the 2 decimals, because the 0... Don't quote me on that, but I think we'll find out when we look at the student response. And then for speed, setting it equal to 3, you should get 2.196.
I did get that. It's not between ot zero and 1, okay.
And then for part D, total distance, 1.595. Yeah, so we can do that. So I did e to the .5x divided by cos x squared, and then, oop. And then 2. And it said that the interval you're looking at is for 0 and 1. So on my window, I'd go from 0 to 1. And then I have a horizontal line at 2, so I'm gonna make this like a little bit bigger than 2. So then, we can just find the intersection. Now, one trick that's kinda cool, like let's say you needed to find that intersection, and then you needed to use it for something else. If you hit second, quit, and get out of this, and then hit the x button and press enter, it actually takes that decimal and brings it to the screen for you. And then you could potentially like store that and use that elsewhere, if you needed to. So that's like a nice little calculator trick I learned about this summer at my AP training session, okay? And you can do that when you find like x intercepts as well, which is kind of a nice thing. Okay. Any other questions on how I found some of that stuff? Something for this one? Crafting that, crafting that intersection for person C? Alright, so if we look at the rubric, we'll keep that in mind. So go ahead and turn to the rubric in your packet. And then we'll go ahead and look at person B. So 1 point for the integral, 1 point for using the initial condition, 1 point for the answer. Let's see if we can figure out how many points they would've gotten. Part B, 1 point for the slope in terms of t. And the sample packet's on page 4. And then 1 point for the answer. Part C, 1 point for the speed in terms of t, 1 point for the answer. What do you notice they did on part C? They only have 2 decimals, not 3. That's unfortunate. Part D, 2 points, 1 for the integral, 1 for the final answer. So if we look at this student, they got 2 points for part A. So they have the point for using the initial condition and for the integral, but their answer is wrong, which it shouldn't be, right? This is a calculator question, so they should've just typed it in. For part B, they got 2 points, so they got all of it in part B. For part C, they only got 1 point, and that was because they, they had the right answer, but they didn't have the 3 decimals, they got marked down for that. So don't, don't make that mistake. Always 3. I give FRQs on my test, and I had one student, and their entire test, all the FRQs had 2 decimal places on every single problem. And I was like, no! They're all wrong! So don't do that. Don't do that, that's painful. Okay, and then part D, had the integral but no answer. That's unfortunate, too. This person really knew what they were doing. Did you notice that? They like really knew what they were doing, and they only got 6 points, because they, just the work wasn't quite there. So it looks like the calculator just needed to be there a little bit better, okay? What'd you say? Right. Right, sure. Absolutely. Alright. I thought this person's answer for D was interesting. Can you tell what they did? Yeah. They were using like the distance, like total distance, but not in the context of a parametric problem. Just like in a normal problem, if you found the distance, so. So be careful, make sure you're knowing your formulas, because I could see a lot of people making that mistake, right? They had, they were remembering something that was correct, just not the right situation. Okay, what FRQ do you guys wanna do next? Series one? Okay, do you guys wanna do a Lagrange one? No. I think, I think that means yes, actually. If your first answer is no, probably a yes. Okay, so this is, this one is the one I said I had to kinda go back pretty far to get this one, because it was a 2011 FRQ. So in your packet. Alright, now, the first couple parts of this, they actually kinda tell you like exactly what to do. So they say Taylor series, but it's centered at 0. So it's really Maclaurin, yeah. So, and they say sin x, which you can do the work to find it if you don't have it memorized. Does anyone still have it memorized? It's the odd powers.
Oh, it's like x plus 4.
X minus x to the third over 3 factorial plus x of... We know what to do when it says, switch it to sine of x squared. Plug in x squared for all the x's, okay? And it only says write the first 4 non-zero terms, it does not say to write the general term. So that part is pretty straightforward, they kinda told you what to do there. So that part is pretty straightforward, they kinda told you what to do there. Um, then for part B, write the first 4 non-zero terms of the Taylor series for cos. About x equals 0, do we remember that one? 1. 1 minus. 1 minus x squared over 2 factorial plus x to the 4th over 4 factorial, okay? Um, and then it says to use the series you found here for cos, and the series you did for sine of x squared, and put them together, basically. Because you can see in the problem, they said let f of x be x sine of x squared plus cos of x. So they're leading you through the process of how to like put those 2 answers together from part A and part B, and come up with that f of x. Okay? Write the first 4 non-zero terms of the Taylor series. Okay? So you'll get that. Um, part C, says to find the value of the sixth derivative evaluated at 0. So let's think through, this is a process where you really have to understand some stuff to be able to do this part. So when you do part A, and you do part B, and you put them together, you are potentially gonna have some like terms, right? That you're gonna have to put together. What do you need to think about when you're gonna look for the value of the sixth derivative evaluated at 0? What's all the stuff you have to consider? Or should I let you get there? So, so think about, um, think about how you come up with each of the individual terms for a Taylor polynomial. What's, what do we normally do with a Taylor polynomial to come up with the individual terms? If we were doing it completely by hand, it wasn't one we memorized, it was from scratch. You would, you would find, you'd have to find the derivative. You'd have to evaluated it. You'd have to evaluate it. And then, so you'd have the sixth derivative, you would be multiplying it by x to the sixth, and you would be dividing it by 6 factorial. That would be the process you would do on your own if you did this problem from scratch, right? So you're gonna need to keep that idea in your head, and set that equal to whatever you get for the x to the sixth term for this, so that you can kinda narrow it down and figure out what this is. That's my hint. Hopefully that's clear as mud. Let's try the next part. Alright, the next part says, 4th degree Taylor polynomial. This information right here, y equals the 5th derivative of x shown above. This combined with the fact that they never say it's an alternating series or alternating series test is what tells you that you're gonna use Lagrange error bound. Okay? So a little reminder about how you figure out that term. How do we feel about figuring out the error bound for Lagrange? Kind of okay, kinda what? Okay. So they're asking us, the center of, um, the center that we were using was 0. They're asking you for the error at 1/4. Okay? So that means when you're using the 5th derivative, and I'm gonna write this part down, but I'm gonna let you guys do the actual work for it, okay? It means that when you, um, come up with that term for your error, you're gonna use the 5th derivative, the graph of it, but you're gonna find the max on 0, 1/4. So this is the part where you look at the graph, and you look at the interval from 0 to 1/4, and you wanna use a conservative y-value, which means you're gonna look for the biggest y-value you can see on that graph in that interval. Okay? So if you look at the graph, you're looking at this part right here from 0 to 1/4, because they say 1 is over here, from 0 to 1/4. So which, which y-value is the biggest y-value on that interval? Yeah, the 1 at 1/4 right here. So if I was being conservative, I'd probably say like 40. Right? Because this is 20 to 40. I'm just gonna round up, I'm just gonna say 40. Okay? So we would say, we would use our derivative, our 5th derivative. We would multiply that by x to the 5th. We would divide that by 5 factorial. That's how we would come up with our 5th term, right? So the part that makes this a Lagrange error bound is this part right here where you're finding that max, that conservative y-value, um, using your graph. Okay? So when we came up with the 40, that was us basically using Lagrange. Because the alternating series error bound would've done this exact same process of finding the next term. It just doesn't have that weird part in the front. Okay? So you're gonna use that 40, and then you can still do your 1/4 to the 5th and 5 factorial. This kind of right here is you doing the labeling. So, no. So typically, you would say, you'd set up like kind of a string of inequalities. You would say this is less than or equal to this, which is less than 1 over 3,000. Okay? Alright, there were your hints, go ahead and get started. Alright, so when I started doing this problem, I couldn't remember the Maclaurin series, so I started writing it out, so I could remember which one was which. So this was me kinda showing, I'm doing my first, 2nd, 3rd, 4th, 5th derivatives. I'm evaluating them at 0. And this was me making sure that I remembered sin x. Of course, you don't have to do that, but you know you could always go back. If you don't have those formulas memorized, you really could go back and figure them out. So there's my sine, there's my sine of x squared. Um, I did not simplify my factorials, I just left them as factorials. That's one of the things, um, about the problems is you don't have to simplify if you don't want to. The rubrics will often have the most simplified answer, but you don't have to do that. Um, and then cos x, I wrote that one down. So that means f of x is kind of taking this one and this one and adding them together. So I said 1 plus x squared minus x squared over 2 factorial. And then, um, plus x to the 4th over 4 factorial. And then for this one, I had, um, the minus x to the 6th over 6 factorial, and minus x to the 6th over 3 factorial. So if you compare that with your rubric, which I think is on page 5 of the rubric packet, it does not have the answer written this way, because they did combine like terms. But I was like, "I'm not dealing with those fractions." So I just kinda left it. Any questions on that part? I think you still get the full points, because you have the right answer, it's just not simplified. So, and that's one of the things, you don't have to simplify. Unless that would be part of what they're asking you to do. Okay, so for part C, what I did is I took this. This is my term that has my exponent of 6. And so I said, the derivative at 6 evaluated at 0 times x to the 6th divided by 6 factorial. And then I set it equal to this term, but you can see I kinda pulled my coefficients out to the front. Can you see how I did that? Okay? And let me zoom in, maybe since this part is gonna be the funky part. Okay. And then, so what I was trying to do is I was trying to get rid of everything, um, so that my f, uh, my 6th derivative evaluated at 0 would be like the last thing left on this side. So I got rid of my x to the 6th. And then I took this 6 factorial right here, and I just multiplied it to the right side of the equation. Does that make sense? This process would be a whole lot easier with a calculator, but we couldn't use one. So I'm showing you like how I got it through without a calculator. And then what I did is I did 6 factorial times the 1 over 6 factorial, and that makes a 1, right? And then 6 factorial multiplied by the negative 1 over 3 factorial. So 6 factorial I wrote is 6 times 5 times 4 times 3 factorial. And the 3 factorial's canceled. Now, in theory, you should actually be able to write the 6th derivative equals this mess, and get all the points. Because technically, that's right, it's just not simplified. Does that make sense? Okay, so in theory, you could do that. I just kept showing my work to make sure that it matched the rubric. Um, so 6 times 5 times 4, that's 30 times 4, which is 120. So we have negative 120 minus 1, which is negative 121, which is what the rubric had. So I do know that is a lot of weird-looking math. Do I need to explain any part of that again? Or is there any question I can answer? Mm-hmm. So I had, I had this stuff, right? And I wanted to isolate my 6th derivative, and so I needed to get that 6 factorial off of the bottom. And so I multiplied on the left side and the right side. So it canceled on the left, and on the right side, I had that 6 factorial, and I went ahead and I distributed it. So I would have negative 6 factorial over 3 factorial minus 6 factorial over 6 factorial. Yeah. And then for this one, I broke apart my factorial. 5 times 4, which is the 120. So if you had a calculator, that'd be much easier, because you could just figure out what that coefficient really was. And then multiply that coefficient by 6 factorial, you're done. So it's, it's just a little bit more difficult when you're doing it by hand. I can't read your guys' faces. My own students, I would like read their faces and know I needed to continue, but it's very hard. And I don't know your guys' emotions like that. Yeah. Yeah, 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 yes, absolutely, you can do it that way. Yeah. This is like, if you created the term yourself, this is how you create it. And I set it equal to what that term actually ended up being. And the x's, you can kinda cancel them out, because, and that's not what you're solving for, right? So since I was trying to isolate what I was solving for, I just got rid of them. And since I'm getting rid of the same thing on each side, it's fine. Again, it's not the only way to do this problem. Did you get yours right when you did yours? Can I show yours up here?
Sure.
That's okay. So you got a common denominator, right? And you combined your terms?
So I got the common denominator, too. It's just still fit over here.
Perfect. Okay. So if you look at this part right here, you knew your factorials then. Did you know them? Like more so?
Roughly.
Roughly, yeah. So you can see right here, she actually combined her x to the 6th is 1/6, um, 1 over 7/20, and got that common denominator. So multiplying 6 times 1/20 would give you the 7/20, and got the 1/21/6 over 7/20. So her job was a little bit easier, because of her familiarity with the factorials. It, her job was a little bit easier on this one. Does that make sense? So my, I go up to 5 factorial, that's how far I've memorized. I was like, 6 factorial, no, I can do it without that. So 2 completely different ways, I'd say, of like getting it, depending on what you're comfortable with. But this certainly works, right? Make sense? Alrighty. Thank you. Um, and then part D, so we kinda have that inequality going on. I'm saying the actual evaluation, so this represents my error, is less than or equal to, and then I have my derivative, x to the 5th over 5 factorial, and then that needs to be less than 1 over 3,000, right? So I used 40 based off of the graph. And I have 1/4 to the 5th power, and I have 5 factorial. And if you don't wanna do any more math than that, you stop there. And you get it right. Okay? But if you wanna keep simplifying to verify that you really did get it, um, you can do, I think what I did next is I did, um, off to the side, you can see me doing my work to figure out what 4 to the 5th power is, which is 1,024. And so I left the 40 on top. The 4 to the 5th, I moved to the bottom, is 1,024. And then 5 factorial, I knew was 120. And then from there, I simplified my 40 over 1/20 to be 1/3. And then I did my 1,024 times 3, and I could see that that... So you don't have to do all that simplifying, but sometimes it's nice to have that like, "Oh yeah, it really is, um, a smaller fraction than it was before." Now, if you do this work, and you're not sure if you got it right, maybe you made a little mistake or something, just cross it out real big, scribble it out, they won't grade it. Okay? And then you can just leave this answer and get your full point for that. Any questions on that part?
We don't do 40 to the 5th?
No.
Okay, so we do 40.
40, and the 40 stayed there. My 1/4 to the 5th is how I got that 1,024 on the bottom. The 5 factorial was the 1/20.
But that cancels out, too, the 1/3.
And your sample response packet, um, if you look at page 13, that's where we have student B. Um, and you can kinda see that there's still, we still have this pattern of 1 point for the setup, 1 point for the work, essentially. So you get 1 point for writing down the series, um, for sine. So that should be, if you have it memorized, that's a relatively easy point to get, regardless of if you can complete the rest of the problem. So keep, keep that in mind always when you're doing these FRQs, to get that setup point if possible. You don't have to know what you're doing for all of it, you can at least get it started. Um, and then 2 points for the, let me look at the right part here. 2 points for, um, plugging that x squared in there. For part B, you're gonna have 1 point for cos, and then 2 points for getting that, um, f of x part. And then for part C, just 1 point for that answer. Isn't that great? They do that all or nothing. Alright, and then, um, for part D, 2 points, 1 for the form of the error bound, and 1 for the analysis. So I think when they say form of the error bound, that might, that'd be this part, maybe? And then the analysis could be this or this, depending on how far you got when you plugged it in. 40? Yeah, yes, yeah. Oh, as far as like showing your work? It's a good question. The hard part on this one is we can't really see, because person B didn't even try that one. We don't like that. Uh, person C did it, kind of. They knew what they needed to, they didn't get very far. So kinda hard telling. You could go back online and look at person A, and see how person A wrote it. Um, but I didn't include them in the packets. Alright. But let's go ahead and look at, and see if there's maybe any interesting information in why they got the grade they did. So they, they said there's evidence of adding the 2 series, but the addition was incorrect, so they only got 2 of the 3 possible points. So they got, they got part of the 1 point for adding them together, but they didn't get 2 points for adding them together, because that part, getting your f of x is worth 2 points, they only got 1 of the 2, because they did it, but they did it incorrectly. So, one thing, hey guys, one thing I do want you to notice. So their answer for part B was wrong, right? They got that 1,19, when it shouldn't have been 1,19, it should've been 1,21. Um, but if you look at this, it says, "In part C, the student's value is consistent with the work in part B, so the point was earned." Does that make sense? So that's one of the things, if you have an answer from part B that you have to use for part C, even if your answer was wrong, they will still let you use it, because it's a new problem. Does that make sense? Yes. So one of the things, um, when I went to the AP training this summer, one of the things, um, that that teacher was telling me, that she tells her students, is if there's a problem, like let's say you can't, you don't know how to do part B, so you are like, "Up, part C's a wash, I just can't do that one all either." Don't say that. Make up an answer for part B, and then use that answer for part C, because you can do that. Does that make sense? So, um, yeah, so don't, don't shoot yourself in the foot by not answering 2 questions. Make up an answer, and then, um, go from there. So that's pretty interesting. Okay. Um, let's do another FRQ. Which one should we do? We can do the other parametric one. So that means we're going back to the very first problem in the packet, I think? Alright, so I'm thinking that since I talked to you guys through the other one, this one, I'm just gonna let you go and do it without any hints whatsoever. How do we feel about that? Scared, we feel scared! I saw some freaked-out faces, okay? So for this one, first one in the packet, I already gave you hints for the second one. We did the second one, we kinda know. So this one, no hints. We're just gonna try it. This is problem number 2, so it is calculator-active. Alright? So for this one, um, dx dt, you're evaluating it when t equals 2, so you should get .271. Because that's positive, then we know the particle's moving to the right. Okay? If it's negative, it's to the left. If you wanted to know if the particle was moving up or down, you would've used the, um, vertical component of that, um, parametric equation, so the y of t. So we know it's moving towards the right. The slope is dy/dt divided by dx/dx. The slope is dy dt divided by dx dt. Do not use the derivative option on your calculator for this because it would use the quotient rule instead of the derivative of y divided by the derivative of x. So when you do these, you have to be careful. This one is, you wouldn't probably have wanted to use the derivative function on your calculator anyway, just because they gave you the derivative and you were just evaluating it, but keep that in mind, for those of you who like that option where you can use that derivative function, is that if you had to find the derivative in this situation, you would want to do those two pieces separately. You would not plug it in like a fraction because your, your calculator would do the quotient rule. For the next one, for part B, we have to use that initial value that they gave us, and then because the initial value was at t equals two, then we're gonna do from two to four, to get the actual x-value there, one-point-two-five-three. And then speed, we're using that same formula as before. And so that one should be good, cuz you guys did that on that other FRQ. Acceleration, on this one, they said acceleration vector, and so since we're taking the derivative of a vector, that means you do the x portion and the y portion separately. So I did the derivative of dx dt at t equals four and got negative point zero four one. The derivative of dy dt evaluated at four is point nine-eight-nine. And so that would be your acceleration vector. And then your total distance, again, we're using that formula. Are there any parts that I need to show you how to type in a calculator or verify? Okay. The tricky part here is that sine squared, squared. Okay. So, math nine, from, nope, from two to four, square root. You can type it in as a fraction or not, it doesn't really matter. Now, I don't know if I would do sine squared, squared, I might just do sine to the fourth. Are you guys okay with that? Is that how you type it? So parentheses, sine x, end parentheses, end parentheses, and then to the fourth. So when I first did this problem, I was not getting sine to the fourth, I kept getting the wrong answer, and it was cuz I was just doing sine squared, I didn't notice the second squared when I was typing it in. Were you able to get it this time?
I did not do sine to the fourth, I did squared squared.
Yeah. So if you were to do squared squared, you'd need an extra set of parentheses. So it would be two right there, and then this one would've been a squared, and then another squared.
I did something different in somewhere else in the problem, even if I did sine to the fourth, I get.
Okay. Alrighty. Any other part we need to make sure we can type in the calculator? Okay. We got five minutes left. Do you guys want to look at the student responses? Yes, okay. So... Right at the beginning... This is at the very beginning of the sample response packet. So, three points for part A, moving to the right with the reason. Considering dy dt, dx dt, and then also having the slope at two. Part B, one point for the integral, one point for the answer, so they definitely didn't get B. Part C, we got one point for the speed, one point for the acceleration. Alright, so one of the reasons I gave you guys the extra problems was so that you could kind of, this progression of, I try it for myself, I look at the rubric, I look at sample responses and see how they're graded, that's a really good progression, whether or not you have a teacher with you, that's a great way to study them kind of on your own. As a teacher who has not taught this a million times, that's how I figure out how best to grade them and bring that information back to my students. Because as you are looking at those sample responses, you start to notice little like nuggets of information. In the A/B session, there was one FRQ that was not graded down, even though they switched variables. It was a C of t problem, and they wrote f of x, and they didn't get graded down for that. So stuff like that is interesting to notice because you start to realize like what little mistakes are okay to make, and what mistakes will get you completely marked down. So two decimal places, definitely not okay, definitely need three, that sort of thing, okay?